Okay, he's going to be recusing himself for item number eight. Well done, I am agreed. Last item in the public hearing, 32 O'Beal Street, site plan to construct a 16,213 square foot community center, section block allowed is 56.43-5-35.100, secret determination zone RT, Rondell Historic District, Energy Area Commission, would aid Irish Cultural Center Hudson Valley and Portbridge Avenue to have an owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number eight?
Calling Cristiano, 13400. I just would like to say that I support the ICC project very strongly. I live down there and it's a beautiful project for Kingston. I think it might be time for Kingston to stop finding every single possible thing in the entire world that could get built. I think that the fact that there have been some problems with the rain and with the runoff is easily explainable. The fact that we have had 300% of the normal rainfall this year, heaviest in that exact area of Kingston, even more so than other places in Kingston or other counties. I read on the Freeman, in the Freeman and then I checked it out in person that just down the street from the ICC site, the Power Boat Association, they have built a curb and they have put sandbags right on the rail street itself and still that bank is completely eroded. These are eating away, the posts which guide rail attached to are completely exposed, a foot down because it's just washing away. And there's been no excavation across the street from that. That's simply a cliff. That's simply a matter of gravity when you have 300% of normal rainfall. I do not believe that this in any way should affect whether or not the Irish Cultural Project Center needs an environmental spending yes. I think it's ready to go. I think it's been held up a long time. I think it's been decided four times now, four times, where the project is located. It meets the guidelines for projects in that area and it deserves to go forward. We at Kingston deserve to enjoy it. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment about the hybrid rainfall. I live in the Rondell. I've been there 22 years. The last five years, we've had a number of these. My name is Whitwood. Sorry, for the three homes. It is definitely a trend that will happen, heavy rainfall. This is not going away. We've been reading the news, climate change is here. We're experiencing it here in Kingston. So I would just ask that you consider that in the future. I don't think that's going to be unusual. I think we're going to have more of these heavy rainfalls. My basement's flooded, it never did five years ago. And I also just want to say that I don't think it's been delayed because, you know, I think one reason it's been delayed was a permit expired. So let's put this in proportion about what's really happening. And I just hope it's going to be a very careful consideration because it's a big project and there's a lot of questions about how liable this really is. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? All right. Before the clock starts, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Sure. My name is Owen Harvey and I live at 26 O'Beal Street. Just for clarification, in regards to the runoff that occurred at the site occurred because the applicant had chose to not use OSHA standards and they did their excavation, not because of the heavy rain. I'm not really going to say much tonight. I just wanted to resubmit the Perkins and Will letter that was submitted to the board back on October 5th, 2016. I imagine some board members have seen this letter. If you recall, in this letter, the individuals who actually did the environmental quality review down in the Rondell District pointed out that the Irish Cultural Center Hudson Valley at 32 O'Beal Street actually falls outside the original and extended BOA boundary approved by the New York Department of State. I wanted to bring that back to everyone's attention simply because in my free time, you know, I love to read your secret review. And looking at the secret review, you guys actually used the BOA as a reason as to why the project didn't need an environmental review, even though the people who did the environmental review told you that it wasn't included in their study. Also in your secret, you identified the Irish Cultural Center as an expected development project. I just wanted to point out that actually if you look at the BOA, it's actually conceptually identified. At the time all of these reviews were being done, the Irish Cultural Center had no funding and no design. So it would be difficult for anyone to do an environmental review of a project that had no design. So I just wanted to point that out. So in conclusion, my ask for the board tonight is to simply reopen secret and find a pause debt as the negative environmental impact of this project is no longer a hypothetical. It is now pretty self-evident. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
My name is Brian Dono.
Bring that right up there, sir.
Brian Dono, Tech of the industry. I did live down in the Rondell and I have a score actually in the Rondell. My concern is with what I've read, and maybe this is something that is not the case, but that these sorts of developments get approved without clear financing availability. It seemed like from what I've read, $100,000 or $200,000 to the department put into an account to fix the property if it wasn't going forward. I just, the planning board takes into consideration that these big projects, that they actually have the financing to accomplish it so we don't end up with holes in the ground because there seems to be more important to my philosophy.
Hi, I'm Bob Smith at 66 East Street in Kingston. I just wanted to say on the record that the planning department would not release information as to what the topic or specifics on this item were going to be. Tonight, and recent cited, was the active lawsuits on the project. Not releasing what would be discussed tonight prevents the public from being active participants in the process. Because this project permitting has lapsed and is soliciting for the third time a renewal of their permit, it is all the more important that the public be informed and prepared to speak on these issues.
Anybody else?
I just want to, this is Owen Harvey, 76 East Street. I just want to...
Do you speak up?
I have, I do. So I just wanted to say that personally, I haven't been the one who's been telling me to speak up tonight, Friday. But it's great to know you're the one. You can tell that the ICC's damaged Company Health Path and 42 O'Beal Street is due to the ICC's neglect of putting up the adhering to the OSHA standards because when they were forced to by saying that the city engineer was cited a violation, that they hadn't done it, after they were forced to put up the salt dentices and put in the OSHA standards for building up a hill against where they had excavated, the erosion was mitigated and the runoff was mitigated to a certain extent. There's still runoff coming on to Company Health Path. But it's still raining, even snowed. And you can tell that that actually really helped when the city engineer stepped in and made them, forced them by a violation to adhere to the OSHA standards. So the impacts, the environmental impacts of this project are being felt. It is really important that you look at the secret again. I don't know what this public hearing is about. I don't know what you're asking the public to decide. Help you decide what your process is. A new application, there should be a process already in place and you guys should already know what that is. And if you're not sharing that information with the public that you had harder to comment on what... It sounds like you're trying to get our attention on what your process should be. But that shouldn't be an opinionated thing. It should just be an actual, you guys all know that.
Anybody else? The applicants want to come up, please. State your names for the record.
Owen Dono.
And I'm Brian Dono.
Okay. Thanks for coming again. So just a few notes that I have. We still are lacking a new stormwater management plan. Correct. We still need that. As we didn't, the applicants did not comply with the original plan as far as stormwater management was concerned. We also are lacking an updated site plan that includes the new dates because we're treating this as a new submission. And I understand that you did pay some of the fees to the ones that the Department of Public Works for the remediation that they did in the wake of the storms. But we're in need of the fees that would be associated with a new application. And as far as the site, the public hearing is concerned, we do have a resolution proposed that would bring us the site, the public hearing will remain open until the 29th of November this year. We still, based on the comments tonight that we heard from some of the public, also our engineer has been... Yeah, so our city engineer is also going to be authoring his opinion again after the public hearing has been concluded and he will be at the next meeting. All right? So that's where we are right now with this process, right? Did I miss anything, Sue?
No.
Okay. Does anybody want to add for the board?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah. And I just still want to acknowledge that, you know, it's good that you took steps to, you know, address this stormwater runoff that's occurred since the series of storms that we've had. So, but there's still needs to be some work that's taken. So that's what we just talked about tonight. So I have formally a resolution of the City of Kingston Planning Board closing the public hearing for the proposed Irish Cultural Center Hudson Valley, ICC HV. Whereas ICC HV, the applicant received site plan approval on April 16th, 2018, for a 16,213 square foot Irish Cultural Center located at 32 O'Beal Street, Kingston Yard 12401, section block allowed is 56.43-5-35.100. And whereas the approved site plan expired after 120 days due to the absence of obtaining a building permit within the timeframe as required under the City of Kingston zoning code and the approved, the approval resolution. And whereas the applicant was directed that the planning board consider review as a new application, whereas the planning, whereas the planning board opened the public hearing at the October 15th, 2018 planning board meeting and voted to continue the public hearing through the November 19th, 2018 planning board meeting. And whereas due to the expressed public interest of the neighborhood, the planning board feels that additional time is important to allow for all concerns to be submitted in order. The board wishes to keep the hearing open for an additional 10 days for written comments. Now therefore, the aim was off by the City of Kingston Planning Board as follows. Section 1, the board hereby will close the public hearing on the number 29th, 2018, allowing the submission of written public comment. Section 2, the public directs that all written comment be submitted to the City of Kingston Planning Office by close of business on the number 29th, 2018. And section 3, that this resolution shall take effect immediately. At this time, on the commotion, will we adopt this resolution? Do I have a second? Second by Chuck Palacko? And with a vote of approval, Wayne Flat? I am yes. Charles Palacko?
Yes.
That's a yes. Mary Jo Roadside?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matthew Gillis? He's not here yet. Yes.
Secret.
Yes, I'm thinking of that, I'm sorry. Sorry. You hear a yes? Okay. Resolution has been adopted. Thank you, folks. All right? Running for business, line number nine, is 181-207 East Strand. Site plan to construct a 12,500 square foot restoration and repair facility, section block allowed is 56.36-106. Zoned and titled, worthy. Paul Jakovitz is the applicant, historic Kingston girlfriend, now I see him in the room. You folks, come on down, come on up and eat. Hello, Ken. Hi, Paul, how are you?
Okay, how are you?
Good. Look, the record shows that Paul Jakovitz and Robert Jacobson are here. So if you want to do an initial presentation tonight to just word or do you want...
No, this is just for information for the board to get a, basically just an understanding of the...
Is that the end of the word?
You have to speak.
Make it like that.
This is an introduction for the board.
We can't hear you.
This is an introduction. Tonight, we just have an introduction to the board to understand our basic proposal and where we'd like to go with the proposal. This is a multi-phase project. We'll require a number of reviews by different agencies. It's going to take a long time to get it through because it is a very complex issue. You'll have to go to the zoning board. We have to have this lit done. We'll have to do other environmental studies. We have to do a traffic study. All those things are in the future for this particular project. So tonight, that's all we want to do is say we would like for the board to take this under consideration in the direction that we're heading. And we are, the first phase of this, and we didn't want to do a piecemeal project. We wanted to introduce the entire project as a once. But we're noticing prior with Sony, okay? The first project will, the first phase of this is 7500 square foot old museum. What we're talking about will comply with the zoning breadth as far as use, but the other aspects of the project will have to be reviewed in detail, okay? In significant detail because of the size of it and the parcel that we're located on and the faces each other around that. So we're very much aware of what work we have to do in the future and we're prepared to do that. But we'll take time and move the end of meetings with the city and our agreements, project call.
All right, so I don't know if you want to clear some mics out there. I think that looks better than the best there.
Let Mr. Dono see, would like to speak.
Okay.
It's an honor to appear in such an auspicious board. This step that we're taking now is the culmination of, let's say, the first real concrete activity in the project that goes back 16 years ago, under 16 years. A lot of the people that are in this room that I've been working with on this project over the years, their hair was a different color when we started and it is now, including my own. When we first started on the project, you know, naturally Sue was here since the beginning, Steve Finkel was here, two mayors ago, many other city officials, and a lot of the people that are in this room, you know, go way back as well. The genesis of the project was a ride that I took on a retired fireboat 16 years ago and the first time I saw the city of Kingston was coming into Rondell Creek. And I just absolutely fell in love. I had already retired and I unretired myself. I was lucky with some real estate investments in Brooklyn and with the markets going up, those had quite a bit of profit to them and I transferred that profit up to Kingston. So from, and we pieced together the entire East Strand waterfront and other places in Kingston as well. We did it very graciously. Every one of our deals was a friendly deal. We're still on speaking terms with every person that we made a purchase from. And we're very proud of what we did in terms of cleaning up the East Strand. It was tank farms and junkyards and all sorts of foul things when we got here and they're all gone. And we've already interfaced with the DPC. We have our remediation plans currently set. We're in the ground fields program. We worked with Steve Finkel and Sue and other people when we were, when the generic environment, sorry, the local waterfront implementation plan was put in and the generic environmental impact statement. And everything that we're doing on the East Strand is within the parameters which have been set by those studies. So we're not trying to re-plant the wheel here. Our objective is to turn around the East Strand and to restore it to the viability that it had up until, let's say, the area of the era of World War II. Where that, I'm not, it may sound weird to say it, but I'm not a real estate developer. I'm a visionary and somebody who sees opportunities to put things together. There will be other people that will bring into the process as it goes on who have more skills than I do in that neighborhood. I'm also not fronting for anybody. This entire project in Kingston, we have more than 100 acres altogether. It's me and my wife. And we have 90% equity in the process in the part of the, in the, in the land. So there's no, nobody's behind us. We don't have any partners or anything like that. We're here, I'm a resident of the city of Kingston. I vote in Kingston, my car's registered in Kingston and my daughter's registered in Kingston. And I almost voted tonight. My name is Magnolia, I am Uchi.
That's what your LLC is still, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm very proud to be here. And we're going to have the first of several community meetings on this particular project at the Cornell Building on the 6th of December at 6:00 PM. And I'll be setting that up in conjunction with the local orbiterman, Steve Shabbitt, and other people as well as leaders in the community. And if there's anyone who has any ideas about how this project should progress, send me a letter, 108 East Strand. And we'll have to do it. It's an inclusive project and I certainly don't want to be confused or mistaken with any other developer except myself.
Thank you. So do you want to just move over here? The floor is yours. You have your orders.
All right. I have a couple of sketches. Now, these are just very preliminary sketches. Okay, for the project. I have a couple preliminary sketches for the project that I've asked the board members. They are just conceptual sketches and while we're going through this process, they will go through a number of changes.
Sorry, they can't hear you, sir. You have to speak really right into the microphone.
These are preliminary sketches and they are just the starting point for discussion. This project will evolve probably completely differently from what these sketches depict. But they are just a representation of what we put together as a program. We have apartments, we have apartment garage, we have entertainment, we have an ice skating rink, and a hotel. All these elements will be part of this project. It may take us five, six years to put this all together, okay? But this is our plan, basically just our starting point. And we're introducing this to the city this evening just as, as we look seeing as to where we're going in the future. Now, we're open for criticism or open for comments. We'd like the community to be involved with us. Bob and Rob, I am Uchi, has invited the community to participate in this process and hopefully we'll be able to do something together here that everybody is in favor of.
Paul, can you send these to us on traffic so that I can, with the office, it's what you're saying as just kind of, you will phrase it as the initial vision or concept, not the ultimate design.
Yes, we sent PDFs. Okay. As I mentioned, we would like to first develop the old museum, the 7500 square foot portion of the project. And we would like to pursue that as phase one. And then develop the other portions of the project after we go through and get ZPA approval for the change of use. and get ZPA approval for the change of use. Also noted that the first floor is within the flood plain and that the building will have to be elevated to the next level. And that space will make use of the parking garage.
And your plan, I know, or initial phase of the parking garage, there's going to be spots available for the public that may not even be associated with building this building? Do we miss another location?
The answer is yes. The, the concept behind this is that it seems clear that the, that the East Strand waterfront will be developed and brought back to a viable waterfront with, you know, within the parameters of local waterfront implementation and development. We're going to need parking. We're going to need some increased housing. And we're going to need things to attract people. And all of these things are conceptually included within this project. We own four genuine World War II PT boats of the surviving 10 out of more than 700 that were built during World War II. There's a museum in New Orleans called the Museum of the Pacific War. They have two PT boats and PT artifacts. One of their PT boats is operational. I'm told that the attendance at that museum is second only to the Smithsonian in Washington. That the amount of people that go through there during the course of the year is absolutely huge. But we've got four PT boats of a fabulous waterfront. And we've already set up a not-for-profit to facilitate the restoration of those boats. We've already had meetings with the Ulster County Community College with their president who's interested in having students work on, hands-on work on the boats as a way of teaching manual skills, which don't seem to be taught very much in the colleges these days. And the operation of the boats would be a huge attraction. We've got the boats already. We brought them here at my expense. It took years to get them here, but they're here in the city of Kingston. Two of those boats have an absolutely fabulous military history. One was used in the D-Day landings in France. The other one sank two enemy capital ships in the Solomon Islands. And all of this is recorded, it's part of the history. There were heroes on those boats and we can celebrate that history here. I also have a vintage Army tugboat which is here now. And we just finished over all the evidence as of the spring. It's going to be used for educational purposes with the schools. We have many other assets that we've transferred up here, all to be used to enrich this project and the other projects that come along with it.
The photos that you're showing here, that shows all the boat build-out of all phases?
It does. And it may not look like that very much when it's done. It's going to go, it's going to evolve. But one thing, some of the characteristics will be part of it and that is essentially located, there will be a facility to restore PT boats. And that facility will be a public access area where you'll actually have glass walls around it and it's a process that can be done as a public attraction. And we also have a very good relationship with the, with the Marathon Museum. And it may be that some of the restoration work may be done on contract with the Marathon Museum. I mean, there's a lot of talent there. And they've made a major contribution to the waterfront and keep things going over the last, you know, 30 years or so. There's some other good guys there, including Dr. Jack Weeks who took care of my mom and dad when they were at Mount Yamada, when he was still practicing medicine.
Paul, what do you have there? I have additional information for the subdivision. There are also some things to talk about.
One question. Your timeframe, and then you're topping it out, like this, you know, length of review process and that creates your project again. Do you have an anticipated timeframe on coming back to play board and involving other agencies? Because certainly we would fall, in my opinion, under to as take one action under Seaver. So, we'd like to maybe try and button some things up to get that process started so that the board can, you know, be able to back with you.
I think it'll take between 16 and 90 days for it to come back from the board.
16 to 90 days for it to come back, okay?
Yes.
Now, when did you say that? The unveiling of the project is, is at the Cornell Building, what was it?
December 6th.
Well, unveiling may be a very ambitious term. We're going to have a public meeting on December 6th at the Cornell Building at 6 o'clock.
Okay. Would these, probably these sketches will be available for the public view? Is this all the parts?
That's correct. And, and other, other sketches as well. We'll have other technical people there from our team who will be available to answer questions.
So, do you have any questions?
None.
Okay. Yeah, thank you so much. I noticed that we were, this is the initial. I think we're using the word, I don't know. And I appreciate it. So, at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number nine, round second. Second Secretary Joe, round favor. I pose carry. Do you find it could still win the vote? We're going to vote right now, sir?
Yes.
Folks, we're going to, with the discussion of this section of the agenda, we haven't forgotten item 10. We're going to go to item 11 right now.
Now, we're going to do first for the subdivision portion of this project. And then we'll go.
Paul, is Jim Nelson here with you or?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't see.
I think this will be a quick discussion right on the subdivision portion of the, yes.
Okay, folks. Item number 11, number 108, 124 dash 134, 136 dash 198, 181 dash 207, 200 dash 206, 208 dash 216, 222, 224 dash 258, 260 dash 270 East Strand in numbers 2, 3, 6, North Street. Lot line revision of the lands of the historic Kingston waterfront. Section block number 11 is 56.43 dash 6 dash 5 and 6, 56.36 dash 1 dash 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 20. Secret termination zone RF dash R, it's an intent to. Wording Paul Jacobovitz is the applicant, historic Kingston waterfront now sees the owner. The record show Paul Jacobovitz and Mr. Robert Iainucci are here. Welcome again, folks. Lot line here.
Yes. This is a. Slants along the roundout, lot line revisions and the creation of new lots, okay? This, the purpose of this is to provide access, public access along the roundout at various ed vaults. These will be pretty good wide access points to reach the boats, walkway along the roundout. And Mr. Iainucci has, he is proposing to grant lands to the city of Kingston for access to water. And these basically occur at a number of locations and they're really for the convenience of the general public.
How, how does that, I'll let you speak, go ahead.
If you had a question, I'd happy to hear.
Well, I'm just wondering how, how the discussions are on the possible conveyance of land to the city is going, is that?
Well, I've certainly made the administration aware of our willingness to, to make available to the public approximately 2.5 acres of our sacred land. And this would be in the form of waterfront walkways and wide trapezes that provide pedestrian footpaths from the, the East Strand to the waterfront. And there are seven of those. And then with the divisions, the existing divisions at either end, that creates nine parcels. And each one of those parcels hopefully will, will be the basis for attracting an end user. And since we own all of it, it gives us the, the luxury of deciding who the end users are so that we can select end users that would complement each other and where the whole would be greater than some of the parts. We're already looking at the most east of the piece, which is Kingston Landing. And I think that would be a great spot for an eco hotel with a sort of shoulder with kayak launches and things like that. And directly opposite the proposed super garage, there's a site which would lend itself to launching PT boats and maybe the police boats and the fire boats of the region as well as other boats. And it'll be very exclusive. Generally, it would be commercial or some kind of water-dependent uses on the ground floor of these structures with residential uses on the upper floors. This will all be consistent with the existing zone and with the opportunities that that zone has created. The idea of creating a very, very convenient pedestrian access is a concept that has been part of this project since the beginning 16 years ago. It took us only a few years to acquire the land. Again, these were very friendly purchases. We didn't ask for much in the way of the conditions from the sellers. We felt that we were in pretty good condition with the, with the DBC. And we worked very closely with them and with the, the local waterfront implementation plan and the GPIS. So, I envisioned that the East Strand will become the economic and cultural and water-dependent engine of the city and the region. We have in our hands the most fabulous harbor on Hudson River north of New York City. It's the only deep-water protected harbor north of New York City on the Hudson River. And it was the economic engine for this region for two centuries. And it can be that again. And with school airport a half an hour away, Albany 15 minutes away, a half an hour to moonlight before, which gives you access to points east and west and the general demographics of the region. I predict that the Kingston waterfront, the Ronda waterfront, will become the gem of the central Hudson Valley. And I hope that I'm involved in for a long time to see that, to see that happen. And I welcome all the help that anybody wants to give.
And your plan is also a voting court, thank you. Thank you. Is it going to incorporate the promenade too?
Yes. Well, that's, that was something that was part of the local water development plan that the, the, having some sort of a promenade is maintained. And we embrace that and we embrace that in time that it was put into the regulations if you remember, sir.
So, these, these right square access points will serve as a way for the public not to just have to enter from either end of the promenade. They have the spots to enter and exit along the, that's where.
Exactly, exactly. And on that, it's one comment I'd like to make there, and that is that whenever land is being proposed to be put to the public use, whether it's in the form of easement or a transfer of ownership by deed or whatever else, if you're talking about transferring it to a municipality, then there's a question of who's responsible for it afterward? And that's always the discussion. Fortunately, that discussion is already taking place between APR and the city. And they have resolved the discussion. So, I'm assuming that if they can sort it out, then, you know, if kind of pave the way for us and we'll be able to sort it out also.
Okay.
I'm very proud of this.
I am.
I really am. I mean, 16 years.
I'm one of those folks that's been around here for the, since your first landing here.
Yeah, you had more here than I have. I've never come here as well.
Absolutely.
So, we're basically in a discussion.
Okay. So, with the, you know, as, as one project evolves, you know, we'll be back here within, you know, 16 to 90 days. I'm sure this will be, you have anything else? Yeah, I was actually saying first.
No, I think now it's just the resolve of the city. Have to convey these properties.
Okay.
What legal matter will have to, you know, be concluded on this.
That would have to go through the common council to convey.
There is one other thing that I want to mention, and that is that the, the land on the, on the Ronda is a landfill. It was a marsh, the same way it is now on the other side of the creek. And hundreds of years ago, smart people put in bulkets and backfilled and created what's now the East Strand and the waterfront there. Those bulkets are, they seem better dates. And we're now working with the administration and with the CFA program, you know, Empire Development, so on and so forth, in the governor's office to get the, the bulkets rebuilt. And the key to everything that happens here is rebuilding bulkets. Nothing can happen until the bulkets are replaced. It's very, very expensive. Bulkets are a cheap. In one area where the central Hudson has their, their pressure reduction yard, that is, that was an environmental disaster. It's been very, very expertly cleaned up. It was a two-year process and they put in a really beautiful steel bulket that will easily last 100 years. And every time I go past it, I envy that bulket. And we may not be able to afford Cadillac bulkets, but if we can afford, you know, Ford and Chevy style bulkets, you know, that'd be good enough. But we definitely need the bulkets. And the bulkets are part of the same plan that the trapezes are part of. And there's no point putting those trapezes in until we have the bulkets first.
And I know that you say it's an expensive endeavor, right? We know that. And it's also one of timing with, you know, eggs being laid or whatever. But, but, you know, the fish, there's a whole plenty of things that you have to go through. I certainly understand that, so.
Well, I'm an environmentalist, so I'm trying to kill without killing any fish.
Okay, that's good. All right, so, Paul's question of your vision on folks. I'd be more than happy to. happy to see you back here, and I hope to see you back here soon, you know, to, to freely discuss this project, so, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, at this time, I make a, we'll have a discussion. Item number 11, make a motion, I'll be telling you this time, the second.
Second.
Second by Mary Jo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carrie? All right. Act number 10.